Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all those who have passed away in our community.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donnie?
Here.
Attorney General Dempsey?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
Mr. Rogan? Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A minutes of the Historical Architecture Review Board Meeting, held August 8, 2019. 3B correspondence dated September 5, 2019, from Thomas J. Anderson and Associates Incorporated regarding the financial requirement and minimum municipal obligation for the City of Scranton's Pension Plan for 2020. 3C correspondence dated September 13, 2019, from Mayor Wayne E. Evans regarding temporary assignments. 3D minutes of the regular meeting of the Members of Scranton Housing Authority, held August 5, 2019. 3E minutes of the regular meeting of Scranton Redevelopment Authority, held August 7, 2019. 3F Controllers Report for month ending August 31, 2019. 3G Tax Assessors Results Report for hearing date held September 11, 2019. 3H Minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meeting, held August 21, 2019. 3I Minutes of the Nonuniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting, held August 21, 2019. 3J Minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting, excuse me, Meetings, held July 17, 2019, and August 21, 2019. 3K Minutes of the Composite Pension Board Meeting, held August 21, 2019. 3L Agenda for the Nonuniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting, held September 18, 2019. 3M Minutes of the Civil Service Commission Meeting, held June 13, 2019.
There any comments? Not received and filed. Do any council members have announcements to make?
Yes, I have a couple. The City of Scranton is preparing their five-year consolidated plan, annual action plan, and its analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. As part of the planning process, the city is conducting a survey to identify residents' needs in the community and ideas on what city residents would like to see funds used for. Please take a few minutes and complete the survey, which could be found at the top of the city's website, scrantonpa.gov. Also, the office musical parody is premiering at the Scranton Cultural Center this Thursday and Friday at 7:30 PM. There will also be a free premiere party before the performance on Thursday at 5:30 at the Cultural Center. That will include food, drink, and music. Tickets for the show can be purchased at the Cultural Center box office. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one. Yesterday afternoon, Scranton tomorrow coordinated with Master Gardeners for the planting of fall mums throughout our downtown. I'd like to thank them for their continued efforts and well as a big thank you for the many volunteers who assisted with this very worthwhile project. They've been doing this for many years now and it is no small undertaking as we have numerous planters throughout the entire downtown. So we thank them and the volunteers who made this possible.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident and taxpayer. Pat, thank you for the kind letter on my appointment to the Ethics Board in which you said if there's anything you can do. So one thing you can do is remain at the end of the meeting. I need to pick your brain because we're trying to figure out how we put a legal notice in the paper for our first meeting since we have no solicitor or secretary or anybody else. I'm just going to pick your brain.
Okay.
Yeah, also hopefully somebody's going to pick up the bill for that. The status of the audit, you gave me some feedback last week on what, had they made any changes to the audit plans? Since they haven't and they're continuing down the road, when Mayor Evans was on the council, he'd said that the audit was due to be completed on September 30th, which is one week from today. Does anyone know if we're still on schedule for meeting that deadline? I disagree with their response that all an auditor has to do after the first year is plug-in numbers. I think you all remember what happened to Enron in the year 2000. Enron was a major corporation and its auditor for some 20 years had been Arthur Andersen. Well, Arthur Andersen did not like to bite the hand that fed it. And so Arthur Andersen, which was one of the Big Eight audit firms in the world, ignored every red flag year after year and gave them a clean bill of financial health every year on their 10K and until the whole house of cards came tumbling down. And Arthur Andersen rightly went out of business. So I just don't agree with the attitude that all an auditor does is plug in numbers year after year. An auditor is supposed to have a professional detachment from management and management's assertions and is supposed to look very closely at any indications of financial statement misstatements due to fraud or error. And that goes way, if all you need to do is plug in the numbers, you can write a software program and you don't need to hire an auditor if that's their attitude. So I'll be interested in seeing what is written up on that audit. I'm very confused with the articles in the paper. Are we going to challenge this decision about the mayoral election and municipal versus special election or is that a done deal and we're down to four candidates?
Well, it's up to the courts to decide.
So it's in the courts?
It is.
There's possibility we still may have all eight candidates?
Correct.
I understand that the county is having another election board meeting tomorrow at noon in case anybody's interested in attending. I will be there, see if they say anything about this issue. I would also like to remind everybody, this is probably not going to be a high priority item, but our Homer Charter really needs to be scrubbed and ditched and we need a new There ought to be a mechanism where that thing is relooked every 10 years or so anyway. But I think it dates back to 1976 and the fact that it's not serving its purpose, just look at how many times we ignore its provisions. You know, when we have to, we may, you know, abide by one section or another, but there are many sections. The audit was supposed to be done by May 31st. The mayor is supposed to provide the state of the city address on May 1st and the list goes on and on and on. Either we abide by the provisions of the charter or we revise the charter and we can't have our cake and eat it too. And I see that budget issues are already popping in the news. The MMO was published, Minimum Municipal Obligation for the Pension Plans. I'm happy to see that over the course of two or three years, the pension plans have turned the corner and have, two of the three have gone from severely distressed to moderately distressed. So, you know, they're heading in the right direction, although we have to be very careful because we need a, what if there is a recession in the next three to five years? That can hurt. Thank you.
Thank you. Les Spindler?
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner. First off, Councilman Rogan, why do we have a police officer here?
That was done at the request of the mayor.
I think it's a bad idea. He'd be better served out on the streets protecting the people than being here wasting time. This was brought up during the Gattelli regime when she had a police officer here and myself and other people argued against it. Again, like I said, he'd be better off served out on the street and not sitting here.
Mr. Spindler, I don't want to speak for the mayor on any regards, but I know one of the things that came up in the last couple of months was the safety and security of City Hall as a whole. And I know he's just taking a, just an overall look to the approach by putting a precinct downstairs, getting police presence in the building, because obviously, we talked about this when the City Hall needed upgrades, that it wasn't as secure as it could have been. So I think this is just part of the overall encompassing security issues that the mayor's trying to put in City Hall. If you were to ask my opinion, you'd have to ask him directly, but I just think that's where his philosophy is going.
I think it's a waste of tax dollars. Secondly, article last Tuesday about eliminating rules that already exist and ordinances, one thing I'm really against is you don't have to display a permit in your front window now. People just won't come and get permits then. If I'm doing work on my house, I'm not going to go get a permit. The city's going to lose all that money.
That's already covered under current code. It's just not a quality of life issue, so it's being taken off the quality of life list, but that's already, you know, enforceable under the Property Maintenance Code, I believe it is.
Okay. Next thing, brought this up last week, or no, two weeks ago, I wasn't here last week, about nobody wants anything in their backyard, how the Sightseaters fought against a developer developing this old school for the deaf, and now I know why. Was brought to my attention that Sightseaters live right near Art Russo, who's a developer. I guarantee you, if Art Russo was developing that, the Sightseaters wouldn't be against it. It's just the old Doorty clique being together again. They want to rule the whole city still. I think it's ridiculous. And while I'm on that subject, Councilwoman Dempsey, since you said you were against that project, I said, oh, you're against progress. Nothing personal, but I'm glad you're only here till the end of the year because I don't want somebody up there that's against progress. I want people up there on council that are for progress in this city. I want the city how it was when I was a youngster. It was thriving. We had 100,000 people. I don't want somebody up there that's against progress. And that would have been progress to develop that land and I hope the gentleman wins his appeal. Next thing, like I said, I couldn't make it last week, but I watched on TV and I'm just appalled how people come to this podium, Bob Bowles, Marie Schumacher, and they ask question after question and you people sit up there like you don't have tongues in your mouths. No answers. You never answer questions. I don't know why that is. You people work for us. You're elected officials, you work for the taxpayers. If somebody comes up here asking questions, you should give the courtesy to answer them. I don't care whether you don't like the person or not, but like I said, you work for us, you should answer everybody's questions. It's wrong, it's disrespectful, and I hope that changes. And I think that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Bowles?
Bob Bowles, Scranton. First off, everything's been political in Scranton lately and the challenge to the special election, council made that decision to hold a special election. You appointed a mayor, you did everything through this council. I don't, and I believe that decision should hold up to any challenge by the cowards in the Republican and Democrat Party who cannot face reality that the people have a voice in this community and it's not about parties anymore. And hopefully, common sense will prevail in our judicial and they'll rule in the favor of council making the decision to govern how we do business in the City of Scranton, not somebody out there that's afraid of losing because they're cowards and are afraid to face opposition. And I could assure you, they will face opposition because it's not going away. The other thing on the rain tax, I don't ever recall getting a bill from God for rain. I never looked in my unveil box, never saw that God was charging me for the rain. But I feel that anybody that is charging for the rain should never charge us for rain unless they claim they own it, they could show us where they bought it out from God because it was His rain, and then take responsibility for the damage the rain does to the community in the sores, the streets, and all the other things, the flooding and everything else created by their rain. They should be held accountable. So am I adamantly opposed to these idiots? You can bet on it. The other thing is, I was at a hearing the other day on NAOG. Judge Gibbons asked me a question, why didn't I bring this before council? I said, "Your Honor, I brought it here a couple times." And I waved to him. I said, "Do you see anybody here from council in the chambers?" And there was nobody there. "I'm waving here today. Is anybody going to attend the next meeting because I'm filing?" As Mary and Emel understand, I could file a motion for reconsideration and in addition, I'm filing another injunction with a complaint attached to it. This is not going away. These are people who ran the authority for all these years and for 15 years, people parked free. Where was their head? Now they want to do it and they can't even afford to pay for the pool. They can't even afford to get it. I want the price of a Big Mac, which is over 500 and some thousand a year, for 280 spaces. They want to pay 100,000. You know what 100,000 is going to be worth in 10 years from today? You're like you paid a parking garage fee. So, you know, things got to come to, or you guys got to get involved. This is your city as much as Mayan or anybody else around here. And when hearings are going on, you got to speak up for the people. Not us speaking for the people, we are the people, but you're elected here to represent us. No way in hell should I have to be paying to go do a lawsuit to benefit the people when we have a council, we have a mayor. It's your responsibility to fight for our rights. That's our money, that's our park. I ask you to disband the Park, NAOG Park Recreation Authority, whichever way they want to call themselves, and put it back in the City of Scranton Parks and Recreation where we have control and we know what's going on. I don't believe any of you could tell me how much money they brought in or ever asked them to audit their books. We got a horse running wild and nobody's looking to corral it. And yet you're letting them make decisions that affect the future generations of this city. Remember when NAOG Park was when you could take your family up there on Easter? It was the place everybody went. You guys weren't remembered because you probably weren't born at that time, but my children do and I do when we were there. And that's what NAOG Park was. It was one of the nicest places in the country you could ever go to. We had this, we had a purpose. Now what do we have? Nothing. The other thing is, Mulligan, he filed naturally, I expected it from him to say that I can't run. He's going to get his day in court on Wednesday and he's going to be upset because he's going to lose. The other part of it is, I'm asking council now, Mulligan owed us money for health insurance. It was brought up many, many times. Jimmy Mulligan owes this town, this taxpayer base, funds for health insurance he received as an employee when he was a solicitor. He wasn't an employee. It's insurance fraud and it should be brought either before council to go after him to collect our money or give it to the Attorney General's Fraud Department and let them file insurance fraud claims against him. Because as an attorney, he knew damn well right, he was taking money that didn't belong to him. And lastly, you need to bring the Parking Authority in here and ask them where our 500 parking spaces are without us having to validate a ticket or anything else. We paid millions of dollars for those spaces. They need to have accountability and you guys are the Accountability Department. Thank you.
Mr. Bowles? Lee Morgan?
Lee Morgan. You know, I find it very humorous in regards to this, you know, debate on what kind of election we're going to have, but the most troubling thing of all is, how did council even make a determination on what kind of election this was? I mean, I really think that somebody should open some books and, you know, it's nice, it's nice to be an elected official, but before you take a vote, you should know what you're voting on and how you're voting, why you're voting, not just, you know, yes or no. It's a lot more complex than that. And for this issue to be in front of the court, it's extremely troubling. And the judge who hears this, I think he should order them to withdraw their petition because what's going on here is, council may have made a mistake in reaching a decision that it's a special election, but the process has been followed through and the residents in the city have picked their candidates. They have that right constitutionally to pick their candidates and they've done that. And so here their candidates are, they're standing in the next, ready to stand in the next election and after all of the signatures have been, you know, gotten and the petitions turned in and everything's ready to go, now we're going to have objections. And I think what that does is, it disenfranchises the residents of this city in picking who they want to be their mayor, regardless of the flaw the council made. Because whether it's a municipal election, a special election, or any other kind of election at all, it's still a right of the citizens to form and pick their own government. And I just think for the court or for any government body at this point to interfere in this process is wrong and that whoever, whatever judge hears this, they need to just order them to withdraw or rule against them because the most important thing in a representative form of government is for the residents to pick their representatives, not the court, not the political parties, not a board. Because this is not a flaw that is toxic to the election process. It's just increased the amount of candidates, the amount of options, the amount of ideas, and it can only be a good thing. And in regards to progress and whether you're for a project or against a project, as someone came up here and spoke, you know, every project is not good for the community. And sometimes you have to take a stand that other people won't appreciate, but I guess that's what democracy is about. And people in the city need to learn to stand up for themselves and if they disagree with something, they need to voice their opinion, even if they're only one person against 100 because that one person can be right. And we were promised a lot of great things in this city. I remember when Mayor Doorty was in office and he said, "How often have you seen a crane on the skyline in our city?" That wasn't a worthy project because when you take a look at it, the parking garages are being run by a nonprofit corporation, okay? And a for-profit corporation is involved making sure that it's profitable, but the residents aren't getting anything from that. So that just points to a project that received massive amounts of aid, government aid, and it wasn't a worthy project. So I mean, you know, I just hope that the council would realize though that our city is actually falling apart around us. It's been falling apart for, I'm 60, so for my whole lifetime, this city has been just slowly withering away from 103,000 people when I was a child to 70,000, whatever number you want to call. The neighborhoods are a mess and we're talking about apartments in the downtown. Something's just not right.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Dave Dobson, resident. Hey, Pat, have you followed the Brexit in Parliament? I mentioned this last week, you know, you want to slap that gavel and scream, "Order, order!" Make me feel, you know, appreciated or something.
You never get gavelled, Dave.
Come on, Pat, just do it for fun. You know, sometimes silence says it all and I hope I'm incorrect, but I really am not going to give up on this. I want to see some type of movement on the $5 million historical grant to restore City Hall as soon as possible. I don't know why it hasn't been discussed better, but it's just a shame and sometimes it almost looks like certain entities within City Hall are still trying to steer us to that bank building and I don't think that's a good move. No, no assessment has been made of that building as to its suitability or whatever and we might buy that for $5 million and ignore the grant for here and turn around and find out that we have to spend another $5 million to convert it to a City Hall. So I'd really like to hear about it and I'd like to hear something on it. And as far as the maintenance people, well, I went through a couple weeks ago the kind of conditions that I had to endure just to stay employed. If somebody wanted to spray a volatile solvent around my work area, I just had to breathe it in. Or I could walk off the job and not make money or get fired or whatever. One time, his marriage had just broke up and he was a friend, but he was, I was putting an exhaust on, or he was, and with the torch and the cutting torch and the sparks could fly about 20 feet. I was working on a fuel tank and I said, "Hey, George, how about turning that torch the other way?" And he told me to mind my own blanking business, so I walked away and didn't earn any money till he was done with his muffler because I told him, "Well, I'll come back and put the fire out if I can." But it's just the type of conditions that people work in, in private industry, I mean, don't complain about a leak in the roof. Try and make some noise about getting it fixed and that would be part of that $5 million grant. That's the first place we should start is the roof and the foundation. But enough of that for right now. I'll be back on it. Now, once again, and this is food for thought with our Ethics Committee, any type of misconduct resulting in a conviction of either a public employee or the institution that we're dealing with outsourcing to should terminate the contract outright. You should be able to have it written right in there, you can walk away from it. That's it. You're fired. Goodbye. And we find somebody else because that's the best way to deal with this and then they won't offer. Here you go, a little election money. Take a couple extra, you know, just a few more. And then when the feds come around, it's, "Oh, he was twisting my arm." I keep hearing about trash and collecting it and not collecting it. That's not a good idea. Collect the money and collect the trash and that gets right back to our, our collection service. If it's too much for them to do their job and that's all they can do is pass out money to our local politicians, then shame on them. And I once again would like to remind any local politicians or regional politicians, we are 36% tax exempt and our school district and our city deserves better from the state than to just tell us we have to swallow it and pay. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
First, I would like to start by asking you, who has charge of the website? Is that IT or?
Yes.
And how do they, I mean, to me, it's a little bit confusing because sometimes you look at the events, they have that nice column of coming events, but I don't know how the things are inputted. On my calendar personally, I have a On my calendar personally, I have a Scranton Parking Authority meeting for tomorrow night at 6:00. Is it on, or is it not? I can't find any, is a room? Do we know if the room has been scheduled for a Parking Authority meeting tomorrow night?
Yes, it has, Mrs. Schumacher. And the administration is in charge of the website. We have no, council has no control over the website.
Okay, well, you might wanna make a few suggestions, though, that we find a better way to either not put events in or put them all in, because it is confusing. And the other thing, I would like to, just little bits and pieces, I have a question about the man-made potholes. It's not as though we don't have enough potholes on our roads, but I have noticed that the utility companies are coming in and doing god knows what, but they, when they finish, the manhole is down below the street level. And it seems to me there's a sleeve that they could be able to put on so that they are level with the pavement? Because you hit one of those, some of them are as much as three inches down, and that, your car knows that when you go down three inches, and it seems to be increasing, so it'd be, I don't know who gets to determine what the utilities have to do, but, you know?
Yeah, that would be the pave cut inspector.
Pave cut, oh, okay. Next question I have is on building permits. Do they expire?
When the job's completed. They're only good for a certain, the certain parameters that are put in for the job. So if you pull a permit for a roof, once the roof's done, the permit, can't use the same permit for additional work.
Well, I'll give you two examples. What about where the ground round was down at the mall, and the Russo, the old pierogi, I guess it was, cigar establishment overrun, I guess it's Main Avenue? I mean, they look trashy, because nothing's happened for, they do a little work, and then they go away, come back and do a little work and go away, or sometimes for a long time. So it's until it's completed? I thought it, I really did think it had to be completed in a certain number of years, or they had to reapply if they stopped working for a certain period of time. So you're sure that it goes until it's done?
I didn't say that. I said it's specific for what they apply for. I'm not sure what the time limits are.
But that would be okay, say, you know, I'm gonna...
I'm more familiar with the building on Main Ave, so if they put in for the windows, and they did the windows, that permit's ended. And then when they wanna go in and do plumbing, they have to pull another permit for the plumbing. Because usually, it's not an all encompassing permit.
Oh, I thought it was an all encompassing, okay.
Different trades have different permits.
Okay. So there's no way to get them moving again, I guess? And the Lerdas. Are the Lerdas for any project that's done in the city, or is it only for distressed areas?
Any new construction in the city.
Okay, 'cause I thought the state law said they had to be in a...
The entire city's considered a distressed area.
So if we go out of distressed status next year, that will end?
No, it's distressed in another meaning of the word.
Okay, now, another one that is rather important to me, how much of the Act 10 of 26, that was a Scranton Authority, yeah, Scranton Sewer Authority asset sale proceeds? That was how they were to be divided. How many of those remain unspent?
I had actually asked that question when Mr. Bolzoni and Pell were in, I did not get an answer on that yet, but I was looking for that information as well. So I'll send a second request, and whatever I get, obviously, I will share with you in the public.
Okay, I would appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Fifth order, five motions.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
No, nothing at this time.
Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yes, first off, I would like to welcome our intern Ben to the city clerk's office. I'd also like to acknowledge Councilman Gollan, as well as his entire family and all the volunteers for the tremendous job they did planning and organizing the fundraiser for John and Bill Trentley on Saturday night. St. Mary's Center was jam-packed all night, which is a testament to the positive impact John and Billy, as well as their entire family has had on this community. Last week, I attended the Southside Neighborhood Meeting, where they retained their current officers for a two-year term, and those officers have done a fabulous job representing the concerns of their neighborhood. I'll be following up this week on a few complaints they submitted to Licensing and Inspection, concerning issues on the 300 block of Willow Street, as well as the 500 and 700 blocks of Hamp Court. Also, neighbors of the South Scranton Intermediate School have had issues with students congregating after school at the corner of Cedar and B Street, which the beat officer for South Scranton, who was in attendance at the meeting, promised to look into. There were also questions about overgrowth on the right-of-way between Front Street and Central Scranton Expressway. I'll be reaching out, or I have requested Ms. Reed reach out to both PennDOT and DPW to see who is responsible for maintaining that right-of-way, and if we can get it cleaned up as soon as possible. On Thursday night, myself and Councilman Dempsey attended the Housing Appeals Board meeting involving Ken Bond and his company, PSN Realty. Although Mr. Bond requested the hearing based on an appeal he filed with the board, he didn't even bother to show up to the hearing, so his appeal was dismissed. Quite frankly, that's how arrogant this guy is, he didn't even have the audacity to show up at a hearing that he requested. It's my understanding that he could still appeal the board's decision in county court. A couple avenues the city can take moving forward are to begin issuing citations on all properties that are not in compliance with city codes and ordinances, which I believe the city should start doing immediately, so we can start holding deadbeats such as Ken Bond accountable. Also, once the rental registration escrow program is operational, I found out today, hopefully that'll be by mid-October, the city can also begin collecting rent from tenants. To put into escrow, that would be able to go towards all delinquent fees and taxes that are owed by the property owner. Due to a receiver being appointed to oversee and collect rent on most of Mr. Brown's properties in question due to his failure to make mortgage payments, there does become a legal question of whether the mortgage or the delinquent taxes and fees would take priority. I did, I was in contact with the Law Department, and they're currently researching the priority question, and I'll continue following up to check on the progress of these initiatives. On another note, Friday, September 20th, was the first day of the global climate strike, which will run through September 22nd, and it's focused on bringing attention to global climate change. This particular initiative was kick-started in August 2018 by a then-15-year-old Swedish schoolgirl named Greta Thornberg, who organized a protest outside the Swedish Parliament. Her efforts have grown into a global movement of students. She played a major role in the climate strike held in New York City this past Friday, and spoke to the United Nations Climate Summit this morning. She stated this morning, "You have stolen my dreams and my childhood with your empty words to world leaders." In her comments, she also admonished adults for not doing enough to protect our environment. Over the weekend, she also characterized partisan efforts that envision an idealized future as unhelpful dreams by stating, "No matter how political the background of this crisis may be, we must not allow this to be a partisan political question. The climate and ecological crisis is beyond party politics. Our main enemy right now is not our political opponents. Our main enemy now is physics, and we cannot make deals with physics." Yesterday's Sunday Times featured a guest op-ed on the climate strike that was offered by the Reverend Rebecca Barnes, Rabbi Daniel Swartz, and Bernie McGirl. The op-ed provided facts relative to global warming, the consequences of which we are already seeing. They also outline the devastating effect of the same that we will see in the very near future if leaders in this nation across the world continue to ignore global warming, or even worse, continue to deny global warming's very existence. I also made it a point to attend the climate strike rally that was held yesterday at the Lackawanna River Heritage Trail Pavilion on Olive Street. I was very impressed by the number of attendees, especially the amount of students and young adults present. Those present were told of the impact it could have, as well as simple actions they could take to affect change. They were provided with small steps which they could take as individuals, which, when followed by others, will have a positive effect. Using paper or non-disposable grocery bags, replacing plastic straws with paper ones, using a water bottle versus a single-use water container, or plastic bottle, and using non-styrofoam takeout containers for leftovers were some of the simple, yet very effective changes that we could all make. I also believe we need to develop strategies on the city level to play our part in minimizing our carbon footprint. These can include initiatives such as decreasing the amount of garbage we send to the landfill, establishing an aggressive composting program, completely reevaluating and reconfiguring our local recycling program, and that's just to name a few. We cannot wait to act any longer. We must start to act on this issue now before it becomes too late. And that's all I have today, thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Dempsey, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. I have a few comments, and then I'll end with a motion. First of all, Joan, I'd like to clarify the comment I made last week, I think it might have been misunderstood. While I did acknowledge that the auditor would have to input data, I certainly didn't mean to intimate at all that that is all the auditor would do, especially in this post-political corruption era that we find ourselves in. I think all of us want an auditor to go above and beyond in any extreme to make sure that all these numbers make sense. So the point was that new additional data was going to have to start from scratch, as opposed to auditors who in the past had had information already in their computer, but I wanted to make clear about that, because that's very important to me. The second thing is, Councilman Donahue is correct, we did attend the Housing Appeals Board. I went there because PR in Realty, or PSN Realty, Mr. Bond is also the number one on our garbage delinquency list, and I wanted to see what, if any, defense he had to the rental registration, and as Councilman Donahue indicated, he did not show up. A motion was granted to dismiss it, a motion was also granted, or an order's going to be granted that he does have to comply with our rental registration law, and we did spend some time afterwards speaking with our solicitor. That brings me to the garbage delinquencies. Someone had asked last week, and it was actually on my list of things to do anyhow, what is the current up-to-date list? I think most of us are working off of a list that was published in the newspaper about six months ago, and I was able to find out that, in fact, the treasurer is the one who does keep the list, and I did make a written request for that through our clerk. We had expected to have it late last week, or at the latest today. Unfortunately, I do not have it today, the gentleman who is in charge is out today, which we, excuse me, you can't punish anyone for that. So I'm hopeful by the next meeting I come to, I will have that in my possession. I do wanna see that for a variety of reasons, there are a lot of figures that are being thrown around with regard to the garbage delinquencies, and as I do my best, number one, to try and get to the bottom of them, and number two, to try and get more aggressive action be taken. I also wanna find out what specific number I'm dealing with. I also hold a fear as an attorney that each day we wait, we are losing out on a statute of limitations that may be applicable in this matter. So hopefully by next Monday, I'll have that list, we'll be able to see what it is. I'm also meeting with Mayor Evans next Monday with regard to the same issue. In that regard, I may have some motions next Monday with regard to further aggressive action with regard to garbage delinquencies. Someone had asked last week about a hiring policy or procedure, that is in fact what I do for a living, I'm an employment lawyer, and I thought about it at night, I always do my best thinking at night, that I say. And I'm not sure in a municipal government that one is definitely mandated, due to the fact that we have civil service, and due to the fact that a lot of our employers are governed by collective bargaining agreements. That having been said, I did research it, I did pick out two that I thought were very helpful, and I am going to forward them on to the Law Department slash Human Resources Department, and in the event they think they're helpful going forward, they're welcome to adopt one. Lori, I'm sorry, I meant to do this in caucus, and I forgot, we had received a complaint previously on a property located at 1803 North Washington Avenue. My daughter received the complaint at my home. It was from an elderly neighbor, and she did not get the gentleman's name. He has since stopped by and renewed that complaint, but gave me a more accurate address, it's 1805 North Washington Avenue. It's two doors away from me, to be quite frank with everyone, it looks to be a condemned property. I don't know what's going on with it, I don't know the status of it. I do know when we had the storm sweep through here about a month or four, five weeks ago, the roofing was actually on the sidewalk to the point where the St. Clair's kids were picking it up as they were walking by. So I know Mr. Oleski's very busy, but if he could put that on his list, I would appreciate it. And finally, I would like to conclude with a motion. We, in the past, we had done two letters, one was in August, and then one was about 10 days ago, to the controller, asking for an audit of the gas card use for the city fleet vehicles. We had not received anything back until today. To be candid, all of us found it on our chair today, it appears to be about two months' worth, which we had asked to go back three years, and I don't think any of us had a really fair chance to take a look at that, I plan on doing that sometime tomorrow. That having been said, I do believe we are all in acquiescence that what we are looking at as of today does not adequately address our concerns. And we have prepared a letter that I'm going to make a motion at this time, that we send a follow-up letter to the city controller dated today's date, as a follow-up to our August 26th initial communication to her, as well as our September 13th letter to her, asking for an additional status, which this letter should detail what additional information counsel is asking for with regard to the gas card audit regarding fleet vehicles, going back for three years.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let me question?
Yes, on the question, I agree with Attorney Dempsey's letter, and also, I was a little concerned, maybe there is a miscommunication between counsel and either the controller's office and the administration. We received an email from Mr. Bolzoni that we were copied on, that he sent to employees of the controller's office and a member of the DPW, where he states, "First, I'll state that the review procedure is not an audit, it is strictly review and should be conducted as such." Then he says, "We are not seeking to evaluate each card with a level of detail commensurate with an audit." "The review is to detect irregular activity and research that activity." So, and there's more to it here, but I think that's the most important point. I think counsel was very clear that we would like an audit performed, if for no other reason than, in light of the revelations over the last few months, I think it's very important that we make sure that there was no abuse and no fraud that had occurred over the last number of years. I think going back three years will suffice at this point. But I do think it's important that we're all on the same page, that we're not looking for a review, we're looking for an audit. If we were looking for a review, we would have asked for one. Thank you.
Anyone else?
If I may very briefly, too, the other thing that became important when we looked back is there was a change in the provider of the gas cards from Valero to Sunoco. In fact, we're putting in that letter that we would like copies of any and all written contractual documentation that exists, so we can take a look at that. And I think the letter just clearly sets up a process that counsel would like the controller to follow, which hopefully will streamline the process and make things easier as well. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gunn, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to welcome Ben McFadden, who was our intern, our first intern, so I appreciate you putting your name in, Ben, and coming to work with the council. Look forward to getting to know you better over the next few weeks and working with you, so congratulations on getting the job. Mrs. Reed, couple requests for you, I'm sure you're happy to hear that. Spoke to quite a few neighbors in the area of Church Avenue, this is one actually that we had already sent to the Licensing and Inspections Department, and actually one that we have heard about for the last few years. 1724 Church Avenue, there was a fire there a few years ago, and quite frankly, the neighbors that live in and around this property can no longer stand it. This property is in deplorable condition, so we have sent this again to the Licensing and Inspections Department and asked if it is on the demolition list, and if so, when it will be demolished. From hearing from the neighbors and from driving by this property myself, it looks like the property is in disrepair and cannot be salvaged at this point due to the fire. Also, there are quite a few issues on Drinker Place behind Richmond Street. Like to ask Mr. Santoli, the city forester, to take a look at some dangerous trees, and also ask the Licensing and Inspections Department if they could do a walkthrough on Drinker also ask the Licensing and Inspections Department if they could do a walkthrough on Drinker Place, Mrs. Reed. There are some quality of life issues that are taking place there. We received the paving list, the 2019 paving list. I won't go through every street. There's quite a few of them, although I will say that I'm very pleased to see that East Mountain Road, and I'm sure Mrs. Schumacher will be pleased to see this as well, from the firehouse to the Interstate 81 ramp is on the paving list. Also, Mulkey Avenue from Birch Street to Brook Street is on there as well, in terms of East Mountain. And then there are some streets in the Hill and in North Scranton. One of the questions that I had posed in the caucus for Mrs. Reed to find out from the business administrator was, the total bid is roughly $1.5 million. From what I remember, we only had a little bit less than $1 million allocated for the paving project. So, Mrs. Reed, if you can find out from Mr. Bolzoni whether we're taking streets off this list to get the bid lower, or if we're trying to find other monies available to go in line with that bid. So I would appreciate that. Also, Mrs. Reed was kind enough to attend what I think is a very important meeting. I had brought up two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, about the idea, the possibility of equipping all city vehicles with GPS capabilities in light of some of the issues that we've been having. So Mrs. Reed did attend a meeting with several city officials and representatives from Verizon's Government Account Division. So without going into great detail on all the meeting notes, because there's quite a few of them, there is a GPS program that Verizon has purchased called Network Fleet, which provides special government pricing for this type of thing. The city of Albany uses it, and Philadelphia as well. The GPS system uses Verizon wireless towers to communicate with the satellite. It provides real-time tracking for dispatch services and efficiencies. It includes fleet maintenance capabilities and has diagnostic trouble codes. Safety measures include capability of tracking the speed of all city vehicles, which will result in greater fuel efficiencies. Data from other cities provide fuel savings that will be realized. The portal that retains all of this data will stay intact for 90 days for designated users to view, and then another system layer for up to 15 months of tracking capabilities. The company will archive all data indefinitely, and they are available to provide that data as requested. One of the things that I was interested in on here is that parameters can be set for each city vehicle, this is called geo-fencing, for which an alert would be provided when a vehicle travels outside of the designated area. There's a lot of other things in here that I think would be very beneficial to the city, but all in all, I think we should be looking to be more efficient in each department. I think this provides a level of efficiency that I don't think we've ever seen here in the city as it relates to our vehicle fleet, and also for a level of transparency that I don't think we've seen so far in our city's history. The only question I had, Mrs. Reed is going to follow up with the administration on this, is whether or not this has to be bid. Towards the end of the notes here, it says that they're working to draft legislation, working on contract details, but I would like to know if this type of thing has to be bid out. So I would appreciate that. Last thing I have is, let's see where I put it here. I'd like to make a motion to have city council send a letter to the administration requesting that they complete a cover sheet that will be created by city council to go along with any legislation that is sent down to be voted on.
Second. On the question?
On the question, just want to take a minute to explain this. This is something that I've been talking about now for the last few months. I had researched what other cities do in terms of simply having a cover sheet that would go along with the legislation. Many times, council receives a piece of legislation, and we're not exactly sure what department it originated from, we're not exactly sure what the benefits are from the administration's point of view, we're not exactly sure what the financial impact might be, the cost, like a cost and benefit analysis, funding sources, so on and so forth. Now, many times, that is included, but oftentimes, we have to go out and then request that information. So what I'm attempting to do here is to create, and I actually used most of this from another city, create a cover sheet that would go along with each piece of legislation, and the administration would then be responsible for making sure that this was filled out before the legislation was sent down to council. This would help not only council, but the public in prioritizing the important information that's in the legislation. And the last question here, I think, is important to me. Why should council unanimously support this legislation? So many times, we have to go and ask the mayor, or ask a department head, "Why did you send this to us? Where did this originate from? Give us some background on this, and why should we all vote for this?" So I just think that this cover sheet would eliminate that layer that we've been having to go through over the last few years. So I would appreciate, and I think I'll have the support from my colleagues here, and then hopefully, the administration would support this as well. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I'm sorry, two more things. Somebody brought up the LERTA, the Citywide LERTA. I would be interested, Mrs. Reed, if we could find out some data on that. Who has pulled applications for that? And have we given out any LERTAs? I'd be interested to see information on that. Also, Mrs. Schumacher had asked, and I know I have asked this question before, but what money remains from the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority? How much is still outstanding in escrow accounts? And that's all I have for this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one issue I want to touch on briefly, was brought up from the podium, and it's been in the papers quite a bit recently regarding the upcoming election and the legal challenges. And I think I speak for all four of us that were here at the time. Our intent, all along with the process that was put in place, was to have a open special election. There is no question that a two-year election for mayor in the city of Scranton is a special election. It's typically a four-year term. It's the only time this type of election has ever been done. Very disappointed in legal challenges that have been taking place. And I understand that's part of the process, even in regular elections, when people's petitions are challenged and things of that nature. But I just want to state publicly that council's intention, all along, was to have a open special election, so the voters could ultimately have the say in who's going to serve the remainder of this term, the bulk of the remainder of this term. If the courts determine otherwise, I think at that point in time, council needs to look at all other options to see if there's anything that could be done on our end. But I do think it's critical that the people have a say. There was not a opportunity for a primary in this type of situation, so it certainly is a special set of circumstances compared to what normally would take place on a regular municipal election. So I just want to state my feelings on that. And again, it's very rare when council, any council, this council, or any of the councils that have come before, make large decisions, such as we have, on a unanimous basis. We all put a lot of time and effort and listen to the public on what they want regarding the filling of the remainder of this term. So I think it's critical that the people have a say, and that the courts do the right thing, and allow the voters to have the final say on who our next mayor is. And that's all.
Mr. Rogan, I'm sorry, if I may, just jog my memory here. Solicitor Menora, just based on what Mr. Rogan said, in the event that, I don't know if you can talk about this now, but in the event that the courts come back and say that, in fact, council did not have the ability to call for an election, what Mr. Rogan mentioned, other options, do you know at this time what other options the council would have? Would we have any say in what happens moving forward? Should the court come back and say that, in fact, that it was not correct?
Well, I haven't researched it, obviously, what council's role would be after a situation like that, but I presume an order of court that struck the special election would also include instructions to the election board on what they were to do. Could it come back to us? I suppose it's possible. I think unlikely, but I haven't really done the research to be sure.
5B, for introduction of resolution, appointment of Robert J. Morris, 648 Will Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18508. As a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the City of Scranton, Mr. Morris will replace Robert J. Palmetessa, whose term expired on July 15, 2019. Mr. Morris's term will commence immediately and expire on July 14, 2024.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C, for introduction of resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of the Human Services Alliance to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $350,000 for the project to be known as Human Services Alliance, a building and grounds improvement project, excuse me, located at 1509 Maple Street, 823 Jefferson Avenue, 841 Jefferson Avenue, and the corner of Myrtle and Madison Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton, PA, to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant in the amount of $350,000 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question, I just want to say that I support this project. I think what the Human Services Alliance does for the community is unbelievable in many respects. Just looking through this application, the total project cost is almost $1.5 million. They're asking for $350,000 from an LSA grant. I just think that this type of project is going to inject, or boost, our local economy, put people to work, and renovate that whole area. So I support this 100%.
Anyone else?
I would just like to abstain for the vote, please.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the council number 71, 2019, and ordinance repealing section 1 of file of the council number 12, 2018, of the city of Scranton and all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and adopting the 2015 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, regulating and governing the conditions and maintenance of all property, buildings, and structures by providing the standards for supplied utilities and facilities and other physical things and conditions essential to ensure that structures are safe, sanitary, and fit for occupation and use, the condemnation of buildings and structures unfit for human occupancy and use, and the demolition of such existing structures in the city of Scranton, providing for the issuance of permits and collections of fees therefore, and amending section 4 of file of the council number 64 of 2014 to reduce the fee to file an appeal with the Housing Board of Appeals based upon the type of matter at issue, and to promote resolutions of appeals before proceeding to hearing.
Heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A past reading by title.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6B, reading by title, file of the council number 72, 2019, and ordinance amending file of the council number 64, 2014, and ordinance as amended entitled, and ordinance adopting the quality of life and violations ticket process in the city of Scranton to be amended in section 3 by deleting numbers 1 through 7, 20, 21, 25, 26, 28, and 29 to remove violations, and in section 9 to reduce fines for certain violations, and in section 10 to reduce the amount of citation fines for violations.
Heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6B past reading by title.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6C, reading by title, file of the council number 73, 2019, and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute a deed of easement and right-of-way between the city of Scranton and Lace Building Affiliates LP, granting to Lace Affiliates LP the easement, right-of-way, and rights as are set forth below with respect to the property, which deed of easement and right-of-way shall be in the form as attached heretofore as Exhibit A.
Heard reading by title of item 6C. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6C past reading by title.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, file of the council number 70, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application by the city of Scranton Police Department, and if successful, a grant agreement and accept the funds related thereto through the BJA-FY19 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Program, local solicitation in the amount of $19,914.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Public Safety?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 160, 2019, amending resolution number 104, 2019, entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a Beautiful Blocks program proposal by and between the city of Scranton and Neighbor Works, Northeastern Pennsylvania, to encourage groups of neighbors to improve their homes by providing matching grants for exterior improvements to increase the grant amount of the Beautiful Blocks proposal by and between the city of Scranton and Neighbor Works, Northeastern Pennsylvania, and authorize dispersment of such funds.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 161, 2019, amending resolution number 127, 2019, entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a settlement agreement by and between UGI Utilities Incorporated, the city of Scranton, and Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission, PUC, to settle litigation filed against the city and PUC by UGI in order to remove the Pennsylvania Utility Commission from the settlement agreement.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.